United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please be seated. Please remember to silence your cellular devices and welcome to tonight's meeting. First item as always is citizen concerns. If there are any citizens who would like to address the board on an item not on the agenda, please come forward. Major Stallman.
Greg Stallman, Sheriff's Office. We hire, we have our ACH clinician at Gilliland, had they have hired the supervisor. The inquiry starts May 1st. We need to find him an office. We were going to put them inside of the jail, but what we have found with jail alternative, which I'm not sure, six o'clock last night, we had an inmate population of 157. So, we are seeing some success already with what we're doing. We need to find the space for our two counselors, our clinicians, to be able to work. It's the transition period. Once we identify them in the jail, we start identifying them for services outside of the jail. There's a transition where they're going to need to come back and see probably our clinicians once or twice until we get them into wherever it is that the program we're going to get them into. What we're asking for, this, I had it set up so they would be in the jail. You can't come back into the jail once you get released. We don't allow you to come back in. This office right back here, Building Services Office, we would like to use that for those. I've talked to Kenny Schmitz, Director Schmitz, and he's on board with it. It allows us a couple of things. They got to come through our security before they can come in. Not that I anticipate any problems with that, but it is a nice thing to have. This is away from everyone and it would be ideal. It's a plenty big enough space that both of the clinicians could operate out of. So, with your approval for Director Schmidt, we could get that process started, getting them set up.
Of course, we can't take formal action during this meeting, but you have discussed that.
Is there formal action? I mean, it's just moving furniture.
Are there objections then?
I have none.
Yes, well, there's no objections.
Excellent.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda, April 11th, 2017. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Radek. All, discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Items four through 10 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the April 4th meeting. Item five is approval of the claims. Item six, public bidder item. A is approval of resolution for notice of property sale parcel, also known as 308 State Street for Tuesday, April 25th at 4:35 PM. And item B is approval of a resolution for notice of property sale of a parcel, also known as 17 Ridgeview Road for Tuesday, April 25th at 4:37 PM. Item seven is secondary roads, setting a time for public information meetings for projects on Haskell Avenue and 220th Street. This will be for the Haskell Avenue Bridge on April 18th at 5:15 PM and the two, regarding the 220th Street project on April 25th at 5:15 PM. Item eight, planning and zoning. Item A is receiving a subdivision application final plat for Whiskey Acres addition with referral to zoning commission for public hearing and final plat approval recommendation for GIS parcel ending in 002 and 004. Item B is receive rezoning application from Dale Frank, Jean Frank, and Christine Foster with referral to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation regarding GIS parcels ending in 002 and 004. Item C is to receive rezoning application from Luke J. and Carla R. Grig with referral to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation. This is lot two of initials RJ addition. And item D is to receive rezoning application from Rodney D. and Jody P. Lieber with referral to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation regarding lot one of the RJ addition. Item nine, human resources. Item A is approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. And item B is approval of NeoGov service agreement. This was approved as part of a improvement request during the budgeting process. Any complications, Ed?
No.
No? And then item 10 is County Assessor's Office, Scott Clausen. This is approval of impoundment structure property tax exemptions that have already been approved by the commission and Sergeant Bluff, I believe.
So, I'm going to have one question for John here on 8B before we move the consent agenda.
Okay.
On this outlot A.
Yes.
Is somebody paying taxes on that then?
It'll be, continue to be owned and by an entity that will be paying real estate taxes on that outlot.
Okay. Now, if they separate it out, separate that out as an outlot and they just stop paying taxes on it, I mean, they have that right, could they not?
We're in discussions with Attorney Bob Rehan regarding a document that will control and deal with just those kinds of issues.
Okay.
Including maintenance, service, and how they're going to collect those funds necessary to pay all the expenses, including the real estate taxes.
Sounds good, thank you. 9B I'd like to pull for a separate vote, but I'll move the consent agenda.
Anything else for me?
Very well, 9B is removed from the consent agenda. Radek has moved to approve the consent agenda. I will second. Discussion?
So, we're just having one public hearing that's combined on both issues, is that correct?
Regarding which item?
The Haskell Avenue and 220th?
Uh, no, those are for the next two weeks separately.
Okay.
April 18th and 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. We are now on to item 9B as their discussion. Mr. Radek, did you have a concern?
I just want to vote no on it.
Okay. No questions for Ed?
No.
Thank you. I'll move approval of NeoGov service agreement.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Potabom. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Nay.
Passes four to one, Radek objecting. We are now on to item 11. It's an information item from Mr. John Torbert regarding Iowa Drainage District Association Annual Report to the Board of Supervisors. Welcome, Mr. Torbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity as always to be before you and bring you up to date on issues that we have going on right now with respect to drainage in the state of Iowa. First of all, I would mention federal EPA action on the waters of the United States rule. Some of you may remember this, but EPA moved several years ago to redefine waters of the United States and our fear was that with the redefinition, drainage districts and virtually every other puddle in the United States would be subject to EPA jurisdiction. EPA actually put the rule into effect. They were sued the next day by a number of states. Iowa joined that suit a little bit later in the process. As a result of the suit, the rule was put on hold until the legal action could be resolved. And since then, what has happened, of course, is with the change of administration in Washington, we have new leadership in EPA and pretty clear indication by the new EPA director that the waters of the United States rule is going to go away for all intents and purposes. The EPA administrator was formerly turned general in the state of Oklahoma. They were one of the suit, the states that were part of the suit against the EPA. So, he has made it pretty clear what his thoughts are with respect to the rule. So, that rule is going essentially to cease to exist. It'll take some time to get there, but that has gone by the wayside. Also mention what's happening in the legislature right now. A lot of uncertainty with respect to appropriations bills. Governor came forth with his budget as he always does in January. What happened following that several weeks ago was the revenue estimating conference, which is the group that tells the state how much money they have to spend, lowered their estimates on how much revenue the state is going to get from various sources next year, which meant that the budget assumptions and the governor's budget were out the window and they're going to have to basically redo the budget starting from a lower amount of tax revenue. So, that process is going on right now and we're watching that very carefully. The legislature is also discussing the issue of water quality and whether there is going to be significant new funding for water quality programs. That would basically be in the form of cost share monies for landowners to put conservation practices on their land. That is House File 538. It is out of committee in the House. It is eligible for debate, but has not been taken up yet and times drawing nigh in the legislature. So, I, I don't want to predict if that bill's going to see any activity at this point, but we're hopeful that it will. Last thing I'll, I'll mention and spend a little bit more time on is the lawsuit that was filed by Des Moines Water Works. I think all of you know that there were 10 drainage districts and three Iowa counties that were sued two years ago, March of 2015, by the Des Moines Water Works. And what the Water Works was attempting to do was to essentially have the practice of drainage in the state of Iowa regulated. Drain tile would have been considered a point source and essentially for, if that would have happened with the ability to drain land, you would have had to have gone out and gotten a permit, which doesn't exist by the way, from the DNR to have the ability to continue to drain land. Nobody knew how that would work or if it would work. DNR processes about 150, 200 permits a year. We have 3,700 plus drainage districts in the state. We didn't know if it was one permit for drainage district or one permit for outlet or one permit for, you know, you name it. No idea how that would have worked. So, anyway, what happened to the suit, that was filed March 2015. In December of 2015, the attorney, attorneys representing the three counties filed a motion with Judge Strand, different judge at that time, but the judge handling the case at that time in Sioux City and asked that the motion be dismissed. What happened at that point was the judge basically kicked the case back to the Iowa Supreme Court. The legal filing has two very distinct parts. There's a federal part and that's the regulatory part where they were seeking to classify drain tile as a point source. There were also a number of state allegations that were made under state law and that included such things as trespass and private nuisance and public nuisance, asked questions about immunity that drainage districts have and a number of different state issues. So, what the federal judge said is I'm going to take all those state issues and ship them down to the state Supreme Court and I'm going to have the state Supreme Court give me an opinion on those issues and once I get that opinion, I'll rule on the motion to dismiss. So, that was in January of last year. At that time, all the focus shifted to the state Supreme Court, obviously. They started the process of receiving motions and actually held a hearing in September of last year. IDDA did file a friend of the court brief on, on behalf and in favor of the three counties. So, that hearing was held in September of last year. And then in January of this year, the Iowa Supreme Court ruled on the state issues and ruled in favor of drainage districts on all those issues. That was tremendously important to us because it upheld our immunity that we have and basically continued to hold that drainage districts can't be held liable for monetary damages, which was huge. So, the Supreme Court, Iowa Supreme Court rules in January sends that ruling to the federal court, to the federal judge, which is now Judge Strand. He takes the information from the state and basically dismissed the case several weeks ago.
We have a set time, I'm sorry.
Yes, I apologize if you wouldn't mind coming back in a, in a second. We have a
Okay.
Scheduled time. This is a, item 12 is an action item of 4:45, set time, public hearing and an action for approval of a motion to a tower lease with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for an initial term of 13 years between Woodbury County Starcom, the city of Sioux City and Motorola Solutions Incorporated. Is there anyone to speak during this public hearing?
Is this a public hearing, Mr. Chair, or just approval of the motion?
It's a public hearing. It was checked on the agenda cover sheet.
Hearing no one, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radek. Discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Is there a motion on the item?
I approve the motion.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Glenn Sutovy? Very well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. We are back to item 11. Thank you for your
No problem.
Patience, Mr. Torbert.
I'm about done, actually. So, anyway, the federal judge dismissed the case and we're still in the appeal process. We're still in the appeal period. They have 30 days to appeal, so we might not be done yet. We think we are, but that's not a done deal. But I think it's important to point out what the federal judge said in his ruling because it's very important to drainage districts. And basically, he said, he looked at three different things as a basis for his ruling to dismiss the case. First of all, he said Water Works is a unit of government, drainage districts are a unit of government, and for the most part, for limited exceptions, governments can't sue governments. So, the suit was not valid on that ground. The second thing he talked about was the issue, what he called redressability. And what he means by that in layperson's terms is that if you're looking at a case and the plaintiffs are asking the defendants to do something, to perform an action, you have to make sure that the defendants have the legal authority to do that. So, if you're asking drainage districts, you have to get permits, if you're asking for them to install monitoring practices on land, if you're asking them to order conservation practices, if you're asking them to order landowners to do certain things or not do certain things, they have to have the ability to do that under state law or it's not a valid request. And the judge essentially said that drainage districts do not have those authorities. He stated very clearly that drainage districts are creatures of the state, that all the powers you derive as a drainage district trustees are enumerated under state law. You do have home rule acting as county supervisors, but you don't have home rule acting as drainage district trustees. So, his opinion was that under the issue of redressability, drainage districts did not have the legal authority to do the kinds of things that the lawsuit mentioned. The third thing he, and we sort of said that all the way along. The third thing he said, and again, this was something that we contended throughout the process, was, so basically, these were policy issues. And policy issues need to be addressed by the legislature and by regulators, not by the courts. So, he said, you know, if Water Works feels that state laws are not adequate, then go get the laws changed. If they feel regulations are not appropriate, go get the regulations changed. But that's the arena where those discussions should take place, not in federal court. So, we were very pleased about the dismissal of the case. I think the deadline is Friday, this week. I think it's actually Sunday, but, you know, courts aren't open at the weekend, so I, I think for all intents and purposes, it's Friday. So, we're very hopeful that the decision stands and we can put this behind us and move on to the business of drainage. So, I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I give a little bit of an update on a symposium I attended today and then I'd like to ask a question based off of that?
Sure.
So, I was at the Cedar Rapids Gazette's Symposium today and they talked about ag and water quality. And we have 1,600 watersheds and we've got this 45, 41 to 45% reduction that is the basis of the EPA saying that the Mississippi River Basin states essentially have a responsibility in the Gulf of Mexico and the lower oxygenated levels. And so, with that, you know, they talked about the average age of farmers is 58, profit margins are as low as they've been. All of this doesn't lead to kind of the environment where people want to do speculative conservation measures and I, I get that. My question for you is, is this, they talked about cover crops and 23% of farmers are experimenting with cover crops and a no till or strip till practices. I'm not an ag guy, so I was doing just as much learning as anybody in that. And the watershed plan that was presented, is this really going to work?
And my, the, the reason I'm asking the question is you've talked about, you know, the liability, which we appreciate, I think, as a county, you know, and the, the letter of the law, but incentivizing with water quality projects and kind of the voluntary watershed model, do you feel like the, the amount of funding that the legislature could put forward and that drainage districts and farmers would participate to such a degree it'd really matter and change the water quality? Because it is an issue, though we don't want the liability of it, I get that, but it really is an issue statewide.
Well, you summarized the issue well and, you know, basically, everybody knows practices that need to be on the land to do the kinds of things that are being requested. And you've mentioned, you know, you talk about cover crops, you talk about bioreactors, filter strips, constructive wetlands, there are any number of things that can be done. The problem with that is all of those things cost money and most of those things, cover crops would be, you know, would be an exclusion, but a lot of those things take land out of production. So, there's an opportunity cost that is also lost. And we're in a farm economy that is stagnant right now and farmers don't have excess revenue for the most part that they can do these kinds of things. Cover crops are, are certainly an answer, but they are not the answer. They don't work everywhere. They're dependent on climate and weather and you've got to have time to get into the field in the spring and get them killed before you put a crop in. So, there are a number of issues that come with cover crops. So, that really, I think, leaves a basic question in terms of what our best approach is on how to deal with this. Right now, what we have is we have the nutrient reduction strategy, which is state incentive money to landowners for conservation practices. We need more and there's legislation out there that would provide more. I don't know whether that's going to pass or not.
Do you feel like the education's there to, let's say that that pool of money's increased? And one thing that kind of chaffs my rear end is when the federal government tries to wholly subsidize something, so like wind, we're going to pay for a private company to do all of wind. I like incentivizing people, but one of the things I thought was very powerful is he showed a picture today of a farmer who had cover crops and had a greater yield than he'd ever had before. And to me, I thought, well, that's what people need to see. How can, you know, if it doesn't make sense for the guy's economy,
Right.
He's not going to do it, which I don't blame him. And how do you marry those two things and, I mean, is it the NRCS or soil conservation or the farm bureaus or county, how does all that work? I mean, the funding, let's say the funding's increased, John, and then, then does everything?
I don't have an easy answer as to how it all works
Okay.
Because anything you do is problematic. Anything you do has pitfalls. The estimates on the nutrient reduction strategy in terms of the kinds of investments that would have to be made, some of those go up to $2 billion in terms of conservation practices and that's just installation, that's not maintenance. It's really, really big dollars. And you're talking about to have an impact, you would have to have widespread adoption of these practices. We don't have widespread adoption at this time. The other thing that, you know, and I'll say this, I think one of the disservices that the lawsuit did was it left the impression in many people's minds that the answer's easy. Because the impression that many people had as a result of the lawsuit is that water quality is bad, farmers are responsible, we've got this lawsuit, if Des Moines Water Works wins, all that's going to be regulated and all this is going to go away. And that's not the case, unfortunately. It's not going to go away. And the scientists that I've heard from say that if you're going to have significant decreases in nitrogen and phosphorus in the state of Iowa, it's going to take a long, long time. And I'm not talking one, two, or three years, I'm talking decades. So, this is not an easy solution, no matter what. So, the question then becomes, should we be looking at a lot of increased revenue to do all the work that is necessary or are we better off doing what we're doing now? And that is continuing to move forward, albeit slowly, and continue to treat the water? That's a policy question and I don't really have the answer for it, but that's sort of where we are in the overall scheme of things.
See, I think we just challenge the bogus science that we're the problem because the nitrogen and phosphate levels coming through the river are higher when they come into Sioux City, Iowa than when they leave the state of Iowa. We're diluting the water here in Iowa. Nitrogen and phosphate are natural substances. Phosphorus comes off the rock bed of South Dakota. It's, it's in the water. We're, we're diluting it. We're, we're removing nitrogen and we're removing phosphate from the water as the river flows along our state. Hypoxia's been a natural occurring event in the Gulf of Mexico for as long as time, as long as it's ever been noticed by science, which was 1979 when they first noticed. But if you ask fishermen there, they said it happened every year of their entire life. It's not something new and I think to call things that are
Yeah. The other, the other part of that that I mentioned is
Leaves, dead grass, I mean, it's
Two key variables with respect to nitrate. First of all, precipitation. And for example,
Lightning strikes.
There's two things that are to consider. One is amount of rain. Secondly, is, I just lost it, timing. So, if you have a crop sitting on the, on the land and you get, you know, the crop is picking up the nitrate, it's using it to grow. But now, if you get rain, you've got a bare field. So, the, so the ground is set idle all winter and nitrogen banks builds up in the soil. So, now if you get rainfall event, significant rainfall event with nothing sitting on the land, that nitrate is all washed down. So, you have spikes. So, precipitation is a huge variable and timing in terms of when the rainfall comes is a huge variable. Can't control those things.
I, I do think we're better off treating there than when we go to our treatment plants. I mean, I, I disagree that it's bogus I mean, I disagree that it's bogus science that the hypoxia costing $300 million annually, and, you know, if it's since 1979, we've been doing some of the same things since 1979. But my point would be, we're spending dollars, you know, versus thousands per pound when we're treating it at the point sources versus non-point sources. Once we get it there, I mean, we're really spending a lot at our treatment centers instead of, you know, dealing with it upfront. And I'm not a bleeding heart, believe it or not, that wants to save a mouse out in a field, but I do think water quality and those issues, I think it does need some serious consideration. Just, and I think farmers get a bad, I think that they have the desire to do some of these things, but you're right, it's going to take a better approach than we have right now, I think.
Just so you know, too, before Sioux City started nutrient reduction at the water treatment plant, or wastewater plant, excuse me, we still diluted the river. There was still higher levels in South Dakota of nitrogen and phosphate before we removed it from our wastewater. So...
Were you keeping the logs?
Uh, no, no. I had somebody else that was a chemist do it for me.
Okay. Sorry, I was kidding on that one.
Well, and actually, after post-nutrient reduction, the levels are pretty much unchanged. It's made zero effect on the river. Spent all that money for nothing.
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Torbert?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time. One thing I think most counties in Iowa, if not all, can agree upon is that it's good that the wires of the US is washing away.
Good thing there's a water cycle where it just...
Right.
Like God had a plan.
Next item on the agenda is 13. It's an action item from Director Kenny Schmitz. This is courthouse courtroom number 209, exterior window restoration.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. The motion before you is to approve a change order to courtroom 207 project to add an additional courtroom, which is 209, and approve motions for contracts with Bogan Reef Studios and the Baker Group for construction management of that project.
I'll move it.
Since they're noted in two motions...
Oh, sorry. I guess I'll move the first part, which would be the change order.
And I'll second Raddick's motion to approve the courtroom 209 as a post-bid alternate. Is there a discussion on that? Are questions for Director Schmitz? And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0. Is there a motion on item two, as noted in the agenda cover sheet?
I'll move that, too.
Motion by Raddick, and I will second it. This is to approve contracts with Bogan Reef Studios and the Baker Group and CIP funding in the amount of $189,170. Is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So just for the, go to the public, this is something that we is pre-programmed within the CIP for the second motion, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And stays within budget?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Almost done with the windows. We're getting there. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14 is information item from Supervisor Taylor, Siouxland District Health update, 2080 agreement, and further discussion of responsibilities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to kind of sneak in a committee update along with, give you some information back that I learned. Last meeting in public comments, our Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz had approached the board on some chemical treatment and some implications for the boiler replacement project. I'll get to that. Last, based on a conference call that we had today with Kevin Green who's in Des Moines, and just go ahead and give you the update on Siouxland District Health and some things that I learned from their Board of Health meeting. First off, the budget, as Supervisor Potabom has alluded to a lot of state funding, and we heard today the REC estimate, they're realizing a $15,000 reduction approximately in state funds across three divisions. And we talked about the efficacy of advertising for a certain WIC program and whether that was a good use of public money. An agency update, Her Health Women's Center held their annual dinner. As you may know, that they are a health center that gives pregnancy counsel, STD testing, and brings healthcare professionals to those who are dealing with unplanned pregnancies, and they're an abortion alternative, which I think speaks really well of the love and care that they show for those who are in those situations. Debbie Durham was the emcee for that. Kevin Green was in attendance, and I was as well. And I like how our Public Health Department interfaces and interacts with centers like Her Health Women's Center. Tyler Brock gave a disease outbreak information on Hansen's disease, formerly known in biblical times as leprosy. And there are few cases of this, and it's one that is as old as it is, is not known its ultimate causes. And, but with early treatment, early on, can really mitigate some of the effects. The media picked up on it from something that they have as a disease tracker, which the District Board of Health, as well as the state, uses. And so that's something that I wanted to update everybody on. And then I put in the packet, a little bit about the boil order, if you remember this, that came down from the city. Supervisor Raddick and I talked a little bit about water quality today. And I just think that it's really important to know that the Board of Health does all the restaurant inspections. So think for a second, if you need to have all of your water boiled to be able to drink, make ice cubes, and wash, they have a responsibility to alert every single one of those restaurants very, very quickly. They worked with the Department of Inspections and Appeals to actually do kind of an Alert Iowa slash No Cap of the yesteryear sort of thing, where they emailed and got in contact with everyone in order to mitigate any effects of that. As an employee of the school district, I thought it was interesting that we had duct tape around our drinking fountains, because you just don't think of those things, you know, with young kids coming up to water fountains, and they're not supposed to be drinking from them, and only boiled water. That's a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that District Health does in advising, and I think that's really good. The last thing is an update that I put in is the county rankings on health. We're in the bottom 10 right now, so I'm going to do my best to lose my 6% of body weight that I committed to and help that. There are some other factors that go into that, but Kevin Green wanted us to know that if we wanted a further explanation at a time when he's not required to be out of town, he'd be willing to come and share with us. Okay, so now the boiler stuff and the chemicals. They included in their 2080 agreement, and this is something that Kevin shared with us and the Board of Health, if there is a repair that is over $2,000, that's something that is a county responsibility. It's our building, and District Health rents from us that building under us. Previously, they had a Johnson Controls Agreement, a service contract at $27,800 annually. That was supposed to take care of all the control system and the HVAC. Early on, I questioned why we would pay that amount every year in service contract. And so we ended up dropping down to a lower basic level of service for that. And then with our retrofit of energy management systems, the county is having Allerton have that annual. At the same time, the situation that Kenny alerted you to on losing a lot of the chemical treatment was a reality. What I shared to Kevin today on our conference call is, I'm of the opinion the county needs to do a change order on the boiler replacement and bring the chemical levels up to where they should be. That's going to cost about $8,950 more. That clearly exceeds the $2,000. And how that happened in the repair maintenance side through leaks or whatever is down the drain, for lack of a better pun. And we need to get them back up to that level. Going forward, however, I'm of the opinion that it's an ongoing maintenance cost that should be the responsibility of the District Board of Health for what it's going to take to maintain the glycol levels and the rust inhibitors that will help preserve that system. So I know I've been rambling on, but here's the thing. They have in their FY '18 budget $17,200. That was once for the Johnson Controls. I think that they can reduce that by half and still maintain the annual chemical treatment, the filters, and some of the one-off, two-off costs that are under $2,000. So I think it's a savings for District Health, it's a savings for us, which is why we've wanted to go to Building Services, helping to take over some of these things, rather than paying an outside vendor $28,000-some dollars every year. So I know that was a lot, but are there questions on...
Was there also discussion about how to mitigate the out-of-nowhere aspect in the future communication between the different departments and willingness on the District Board's part to entertain sort of that ongoing maintenance cost?
Yes. So we talked about their person there, Tom Cavillo, being in touch with us with our Building Services Director, and I assured him it's a two-way street. So if there's things that we should be paying for, and an example was, they had an outlet that was moved, and that was part of the energy management changeover, they paid for it. They shouldn't have. It was $150, but we want to pay for that, which is our responsibility. It's part of a larger CIP project, but we need that communication. Chairman, we also talked about training for filter replacements and monitoring those chemical levels, and then having this two-way dialogue. It's a change, but I think it's a change for the better, having our Building Services Director in standardized energy management per building. So...
Sometimes there may be equipment training that needs to be received by, when there's a new major item. Am I right in that?
Absolutely. So when we change over to this, it's not a Johnson Control System, it's Allerton, there'll need to be some training there. The other thing I tried to assure them, and I think Kevin was very responsive, is we want to save county money, but we want to save Board of Health money, too. And this is a perfect example where they can cut their budget in half for this item and save some of the money that's being lost from the state. We want to save on both ends of things, and this, to me, is just about efficiency. So...
Good. Questions or thoughts? Mr. Potabom?
So you're thinking that $8,500 will cover the monitoring and the treating once the boiler...
Right. So it's about $2,000, Marty, for the filters annually, and about $2,000 for the chemical replacement and monitoring. So there's about four right there, and we're padding it with another four for... The other thing we thought is, shouldn't, what should you really need a lot of maintenance on with new boilers, new primary pumps, new control system? Probably shouldn't have a lot. And if they do have a $10,000 thing, that's going to be our responsibility, so feel like that'll be adequate.
And I just worry that the monitoring gets done on a consistent basis.
Sure.
You're going to need to write back here.
Yep. And Kenny and Shane already talked with Kevin about a joint meeting with Kevin, Tyler, and Tom Cavillo to set up, here's what that looks like on a monthly basis, so that we don't get in a situation where, oh, look, we're out of gas, so to speak.
Okay.
Well, thanks for the update.
Sure.
Any other thoughts on that?
So I, one last thing. I do believe that we'll probably need to have an agenda item as a change order to authorize the $8,950. And we'll look forward to that.
Well, an interesting, you brought up leprosy. Did you know the Hebrew meaning of that is evil speech? So now you know that those that got leprosy were guilty of evil speech, no?
Did not know that.
Worthless fact of the day for you guys.
Actually, visited a leper colony in Vietnam, but we're probably getting far afield from the agenda, so...
Sounds bad enough that I read the article in the journal.
Is that all for this item?
That is.
Thank you. Next item is 15, Chairman's Report. A is an April 7 meeting I attended for the US 20 Corridor Association Regular Meeting in Correctionville. Mostly good news, although the head honchos of this association still remain skeptical, because this has been in the works for decades. But there was much good news delivered by the DOT. Grading is almost complete. You can probably see that just driving to Correctionville. An estimated completion date is November 2018. There was some news shared regarding an archaeological find, which may turn out to be a greater find than the effigy mounds in Iowa. The artifacts are, have went or are on their way to Sanford Museum in Cherokee. They included Native American pottery bits, arrowheads, and discs. Every aspect of the project has been let. There will be work on five bridges within Woodbury County, I believe, and there is hope for a dry spring. Last year was very wet, it was mentioned, and that delayed some of the construction. So like I said, good news. The next meeting of the association is in July, and we'll have more to report back then.
Any prognostication on whether it's going to be a wet or dry spring?
A what?
Any fortune telling on whether it's going to...
Well, I don't know. We have a groundhog for winter, but I don't know what animal would let us know.
I'm kind of hoping for a wet one with the irrigation that's required, but anyway.
Right. There's always a trade-off.
All right.
Always a trade-off. And item B, a very minor change to the agenda front page. You'll notice the now streaming has a link that people can actually remember and go home and type into their computers on YouTube, rather than remembering question mark V equal sign seven capital Q, capital Q O, lowercase S E P Q, and et cetera.
And the hits went through the roof.
Well, I was just mentioning to another supervisor, we, the journal's last mention of our average hits was about 25, and we're hitting about 50 every week now. So it's 100% increase. So...
Kind of a big deal.
Kind of a big deal.
Might get a news story.
Right. Item 16, reports on committee meetings.
Missed the program meeting today for being at the Iowa Idea Symposium with the Gazette, but we'll catch back up with Lisa McNeil and report back on what was learned, trying to dig into some region budget things. I'll be talking with Dennis about that and making a recommendation back.
That is a mental health-related committee, correct?
Right, the region, yep.
Mr. Raddick, were you able to make that? Any other updates on committee meetings? Any board concerns and comments?
Did notice in county news, we were one of the lowest-ranking counties for drug overdose deaths, and one of the top 20% counties for population growth.
Well, hey.
Good news.
Good news. Any other, any other thoughts?
I think I may have mentioned this to you, Mr. Chair, but if I haven't, April 23 to the May 5, back on to go to Fort Jackson for Captain's Career Course to make majors. So I know that we probably have, that probably has an implication for whether or not we continue to meet during the Washington DC trip, week anyway. So just keep that in your...
So the orders came through, and those are confirmed dates?
Yep.
Okay. April 23 to May 5. In the past, if we have to approve claims by email, Pat has mentioned that's an option for our board, because there will not be a board meeting the week of the Washington DC trip with three absences that I know of on the board. Board concern from myself, just a heads up that likely next Tuesday, there'll be an information item for the board related to some discussions I've been having with our public bidder, Heather Satterwhite, on listing unsold county properties in the legal section of the local newspaper, and hopefully be accompanied by some media coverage and hopefully get that out during the Tuesday... hopefully get that out during the Tuesday meeting ahead of publication date following. Mr. Taylor?
I'm not sure if I mentioned this last time or not, but the House passed Senate File 444-90 to 3, which is a transportation bill from the governor. It's got some amended language. The way it's gonna work for 24/7 is you have the option of opting in, it's not a pilot program, but you could also do interlock ignition and a variety of, of things, so we'll see where it goes from there.
Very good. Any other board concerns and comments? Hearing none, we are adjourned.